Ubisoft Live's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
In Q, roll call please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Here.
Supervisor House?
Here.
Supervisor Fur is absent. Supervisor Bradford?
Here.
Supervisor Messick?
Here.
Thank you.
Great. As a courtesy to others, please turn off cell phones or other electronic devices which may disrupt the meeting. If attending via Zoom, have your microphones muted at all times when you're not speaking. All items on the agenda, other than correspondence and board and staff member reports, are considered items for which the board may take action. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on action items on the agenda when the item is heard, and comments shall be limited to three minutes per individual or group. So first up this morning is the consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, there's a first and a second. Is there any board comment or question on the consent agenda? Okay, any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, consent agenda passes. Next we'll move on to special presentations, and we're going to start off with item 338, 2025, Present Proclamation to Colonel James Bartrand II Honoring His Years of Service. So Colonel Bartrand, if you'll meet me up at the podium. County of Yuba Board of Supervisors Proclamation Recognizing and Commending Colonel James Bartrand II Whereas Colonel James Bartrand II has honorably served in the United States Air Force for over 23 years, upholding the highest standards of integrity, leadership, and service to our nation. And whereas Colonel Bartrand commissioned into the Air Force in 2001 following graduation from Washington State University, launching a distinguished career that has spanned multiple continents, commands, and missions critical to the defense of the United States. And whereas he started his career as a B-1 pilot, transitioning to the T-38 as an instructor, and later the U-2, Colonel Bartrand commanded the Fifth Reconnaissance Squadron in US Indo-Pcom, leading 250 personnel and executing Indo-Pcom's manned high-altitude reconnaissance mission. He served in the Air Combat Command Operations Staff as the Crisis Response Division Chief, and earned two master's degrees, one from Air University and the other from Army War College. And whereas over the course of his career, Colonel Bartrand held numerous leadership positions, where his exemplary service was recognized with numerous military decorations, including the Legion of Merit, the Meritus Service Medal with four oak leaf clusters, the Air Medal, the Aerial Achievement Medal, the Air Force Commendation Medal, the Air Force Outstanding Unit Award, and other accolades recognizing his leadership in both operational and command roles. And whereas Colonel Bartrand's tenure at Beale Air Force Base has been marked by a spirit of collaboration and excellence, directly supporting the missions of the U-2 Dragon Lady, the RQ-4 Global Hawk, and the T-38 Talon aircraft, while leading over 7,000 airmen, civilians, and contractors with distinction. And whereas Colonel Bartrand played a key role in strengthening relationships between Beale Air Force Base and surrounding communities, particularly Yuba County, Yuba Water Agency, and regional partners working together on shared goals related to water security, infrastructure resilience, regional emergency response preparedness, and community well-being. And whereas his professionalism, humility, and commitment to the airmen and their families have left an enduring legacy at Beale Air Force Base and throughout the broader Sacramento Valley, now therefore be it resolved that the Yuba County Board of Supervisors hereby congratulates and commends Colonel James Bartrand for his decades of service, his exceptional leadership, and his unwavering partnership with Yuba County and its residents, and affirms that he will always be considered a friend and honorary member of the Yuba County community. So, thank you Colonel, we just really appreciate all you've done to continue to build the bridge stronger between the community and Beale, and support the community and help us support the base. So that's why we wanted to honor you on your retirement, and we're excited that you're going to be sticking around because your wife has family in Wheatland. So, thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you Gary, and thank you to the entire board. I'm obviously very honored and humbled to be recognized today, and it would not be without you and the leadership on the board and all of the great people here in Yuba County that support us at Beale every day, that we would be able to do our mission. When our airmen deploy, the community writ large, both here in Yuba County and in Placer and other surrounding counties, are the foundation that really help our airmen's families survive while they're gone. And I thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you Colonel Bartrand. Yep. Board would like to come down for a photo? Okay, next up is item 275, 2025, Receive Update from Human Resources Regarding Workforce Development Plan. Morning Tiffany.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about all that. Good morning. Chair, members of the board, Tiffany Manuel, Human Resources Director, and we had Ezzy distribute some culture swag for you guys that we'll be handing out to our employees, so you should have that in front of you. Oh, she's handing it out right now. Great, thank you. So I'm excited to share with your board an overview of the concepts within our organization's workforce development plan. When creating this plan, we utilized organizational data and our employees' perspectives to establish a clear training and development strategy and structure that fosters a culture of training and development strategy and structure that, I'm sorry, that, I'm pre-reading, totally nervous right now, I'm really sorry, that fosters a culture of growth, ensuring that every employee is engaged, connected, skilled, supported, and empowered. And I'll explain the qualities of our workforce culture as I go through the presentation. All right, so before I get into everything, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the Human Resources Workforce Development Team, Amber Dara and Daniel Camarina. Amber is a long-term dedicated employee with an unwavering passion for workforce development, and Daniel has been with Human Resources for a little over a year. He's recently retired from a long-term military career and currently pursuing his master's degree in human resources management. Our workforce development plan aligns directly with the county's strategic plan, which identifies very clear priorities for the organization's workforce and customer service. Human Resources has been relentlessly working to meet our objectives, and I'm proud to share that we're well on our way. But this type of cultural shift involves everyone at every level in the organization, and often takes several years to fully implement. In December of 2023, we brought together a committee with members from many different county departments to guide our efforts. The committee is comprised of representatives with diverse levels of experience who understand the county's operational realities and bring a shared passion for a comprehensive people-first approach to workforce development. The committee is dedicated to the creation of this plan and leading the path to enhance every stage of the employee experience, from job advertising, the application and testing process, interviewing, the pre-employment process, onboarding, training, coaching, performance management, culture, recognition, retention, and long-term development. This holistic view will ensure that our workforce development programs consistently reflect the county's commitment to sustained public service excellence. What does it look like when we say yes to workforce development? We've determined that when we say yes, we attract top talent who are committed to public service and innovation. We develop our employees through consistent training, coaching, and leadership opportunities, building skills and clear career pathways. We recognize and value contributions to foster pride and encourage high performance. We embed the Yes To Yuba mindset, encouraging kindness, creativity, and collaboration in every interaction. And we prepare the next generation of public servants to carry forward the county's mission with integrity and adaptability. Workforce development isn't a one-time effort. It is a commitment to making Yuba County an employer of choice and ensuring we retain the people who meet our community's needs today and in the future. This plan is our accountability tool to help us get there. What does workforce development feel like when it's in action? When we get it right, our employees are engaged. They're deeply committed to the county's mission and values, taking ownership and pride in their work and finding purpose and satisfaction in the meaningful nature of their roles. They're connected. They understand how their roles contribute to the county's goals while actively collaborating and communicating with colleagues. They're skilled. They are equipped with training, knowledge, and tools needed to excel, staying current with industry best practices and growing in confidence and capability. They're supported. They are provided with development opportunities, mentoring and coaching with leaders who actively invest in their growth, fostering high morale, well-being, and retention across the organization. And they're empowered. They embrace and model the Yes To Yuba mindset, promoting a positive collaborative culture. So to guide this plan, Human Resources, the committee, and an outside consultant reviewed data from leadership retreats, employee surveys, generational factors, and workshops focused on what an ideal Yuba County employee experience would be. The survey results showed that overall, our employees are satisfied working for the county. At the same time, we recognize that the workforce landscape is evolving, influenced by economic pressures, generational changes, mental health needs, and a competitive job market. Our employees have made it clear they seek more than just competitive pay, though. They're looking for purpose, opportunities to grow, and a supportive work environment. In developing this plan, we identified opportunities to enhance the employee experience through clear career pathways, training, competitive compensation, and prioritizing well-being. We also identified gaps in recruiting, training, development, recognition, retention, and culture that we need to address to build a resilient, future-ready workforce. So to provide a clear path forward, our plan is structured around four key pillars: recruitment, development, recognition, and culture. Our workforce development plan addresses recruitment as a key pillar in building and maintaining our workforce. We established two primary goals that we believe will support our commitment to ensuring an efficient, timely recruitment process that attracts and empowers departments to hire employees with the right experience and qualifications. Key highlights in the plan that we've already completed include the creation of two high-quality recruitment videos to showcase Yuba County's culture and expectations, and the July 1st implementation of NeoGov Insight, a recruitment applicant system which will streamline internal requisitions, improve recruitment timelines, and enhance the user experience for the candidate and for the departments. The plan also emphasizes the importance of delivering a meaningful, engaging onboarding experience that incorporates the Yes To Yuba mindset, ensuring new employees feel welcomed and prepared to serve our community, and we've made progress in this area as well. Looking ahead, the workforce development plan calls for continued use of technology and process improvements to increase efficiencies in recruitment, continue to provide clear, accurate position descriptions and qualifications that accurately reflect the responsibilities of the job, and improved timeliness in pre-employment processes, along with a strong partnership between HR and departments, combining our expertise to attract and hire the best talent for Yuba County. Recruiting is only the first step. To truly build and retain a strong workforce, we must also invest in their ongoing development. The development pillar focuses on equipping our employees with the tools, training, and opportunities they need to grow. The employee survey responses showed us a strong desirable, a strong desirable, a strong desire for flexible training and development plans that are tailored to individual learning styles. Employees really prefer in-person training because it allows a more engaging experience. However, post-COVID, we've seen a drastic change in this area, and either trainings are no longer offered in person, or what used to cost a few hundred dollars to provide now costs a few thousand dollars. So we're trying to creatively navigate and find ways to meet the workforce needs in that area. We've identified gaps in the need for foundational and soft skills training, like writing skills and how to create and maintain Excel spreadsheets, and how to actively listen, or Civil Service 101. We've also identified that not all departments have equal access to training, either due to size and lack of access to resources or budget constraints. Additionally, our supervisors and other leaders need help in developing their skills in communication and having difficult conversations, setting boundaries with managing peers, and team building. To address some of the areas, the plan identifies solutions that include a revamped academy series. We're working on four academies right now, the Yes To Yuba Academy, Emerging Leaders, Supervisory, and Management. The plan also compiles training resources that we will use to help us meet our goals. The tools include, but are not limited to, NeoGov Learn, which is a learning management system with a catalog of over 1,500-plus courses and centralized tracking, a variety of contracts with outside vendors, internal subject matter experts who will help provide training and mentorship opportunities, and the creation of a supervisor's toolkit that will be on the HR Intranet page. The plan's action items also include the need to create a mentorship program to support career growth, integrate employee development plans and succession planning into departmental practices, and implementing a county-wide performance management system which will be NeoGov Perform, and prioritize personal and professional growth as a part of our culture. Recognition is another equally important part of the plan. We are committed to creating a consistent and meaningful recognition experience across the county, ensuring all departments, regardless of size or resources, can celebrate and appreciate their employees. The county currently has a variety of ways we recognize our employees, either countywide efforts, like the annual employee appreciation barbecue, or we have our service awards, or at a department level, like the sheriff's case of the month, or Health and Human Services utilizes Ping Board to recognize their employees. We are proud of all the work that departments are already putting into recognition. However, the plan identifies a few areas where we can enhance recognition, such as recognizing five years of service with a vesting coin and certificate, adding that to our existing service awards, implementing a way to recognize excellence in customer service or development efforts with pins and challenge coins that employees can proudly display, and restart our employee appreciation award program to align the awards with our values and Yes To Yuba mindset. The support departments, we will develop a recognition toolkit with practical, scalable ideas, and more ideas that are engaging with the newer generations entering the workforce, such as instant recognition, micro-recognition, and peer-to-peer shout-outs. These tools will ensure recognition becomes a part of the culture, not just an event, fostering a workplace where employees feel seen and valued. Our final pillar in the workforce development plan is culture. A key part of our approach in fostering a culture where employees at all levels consistently demonstrate a Yes To Yuba mindset. We know the employee experience is shaped by leaders and managers who model our county values, so our goals also include ensuring leaders and managers understand their roles and consistently embody those values. Yuba County is already a very special place to work, and our culture truly sets us apart. What we identified, however, is a gap in having a formal structure that helps employees understand, identify with, and embrace that culture across all departments. Building on the Yes To Yuba mindset value from our strategic plan, we developed our cultural practices to formalize and define what our culture looks like in action, ensuring the employees know what it means to live out our values each day. The great news is, is that many employees are already demonstrating these practices. This just makes it easier for everyone to see, understand, and own them. We are incorporating culture into everything we do, rolling out the Yes To Yuba mindset across the organization, integrating it into awards and recognition, and embedding it into the academies that we launch, including our Yes To Yuba Leadership Workshop that we'll be holding next month. In closing, our workforce development plan is more than recruitment, development, recognition, and culture. It's about investing in people, strengthening our organization, and ensuring Yuba County remains a place where employees grow, feel valued, and continue making a meaningful impact in the community that we serve. So thank you for your support as we move forward in building our thriving workforce and carrying Yuba County into the future. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you Tiffany. Any questions or comments from the board?
Through the chair. Yuba County is known for being solution-oriented rather than problem-oriented, and that's carried through for years, and has been a reason why our building department is as well thought of as it is, because it's one of the few building departments you see the contractors coming out smiling. And it's a, it's a pleasure working here, working with the people.
It is.
Anything else?
Through the chair. I just want to thank the HR department for continuing to push development for employees and opportunities within the county. That pie chart shows a lot, you know, a few years back, it'd probably look a whole lot different.
It did.
So to be a millennial and see that big of a piece of our operating group being successful in the workplace is pretty amazing, especially with how much development it probably took to get them ready for work, especially after COVID and everything else. But thank you for continuing to focus on development of our employees.
Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Have you tried these yet? Because I'm not trusting this lid. I've been wearing my coffee. Make sure to give it a try, though.
We picked a few different types of swag to hand out to employees. Those coffee cups are for our safety employees since they don't wear lanyards and different things. But yeah, hopefully you enjoy your cups, and I'm sorry I was nervous. Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany. Next. Next up is Receive Update from Human Resources Regarding the Blue Zones Project Work Site.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair and members of the board, Karen Fassler, Assistant HR Director. It's really great to see workforce development and culture picking off and moving forward at the county. And along those lines, I'm excited to share that Yuba County has officially achieved Blue Zones Project Work Site approval county-wide. The accomplishment directly supports one of our 2025 strategic plan priorities under organizational culture, which called on us to complete the steps to receive Blue Zones designation of the probation and sheriff's facilities. At the podium with me are Salvador Martinez, HR Analyst, and Christina Espinoza, our organizational and well-being lead with Blue Zones Project. These two worked diligently with our liaisons across the many county departments, and through all of their collective efforts, we've not only met our strategic priority, but we exceeded it. In addition to the probation and sheriff's office, we've also secured approval for several other smaller departments. This builds on our earlier success with gaining the worksite approval for HHS and the Government Center. The result, Yuba County as a whole is now a Blue Zones approved worksite. The designation signifies that a workplace has implemented policies and programs that promote employee well-being and healthy lifestyles and align with the Blue Zones Project principles. It has been really fabulous to see the many initiatives specific to the individual departments. Many of these initiatives are already in place, and they align with the Blue Zones Project principles. We've been doing this for a while, and now we're acknowledging much of what we're doing. The experience overall has encouraged us at each department to reflect on our internal practices and to prioritize employee well-being in a more intentional way. We are grateful to individuals in each department that Sal and Christina partnered with. We're grateful for all of their collaborative support as we've gone through this process, and we look forward to building momentum and integrating Blue Zones principles more deeply into our daily operations and into future countywide wellness initiatives. We have planned a small celebration to recognize our milestone. It's set for July 22nd at the Government Center. It's a board day. That was intentional. The celebration will be between 11:00 and 1:00. We will have representatives from the Blue Zones Project, some of our county health plans, Training Zone, our employee assistance plan, and some team members from the HR department that will share other wellness programs that are available to our employees. We will have Blue Zones Project approved snacks, the Blue Zones Project smoothie bag, if you want to work for your drink. We encourage that. And we'll have some great raffle prizes for folks that want to join us. So I'm hoping you will all attend. And with that, I'd like to give the mic to Christina so she can share a little bit as well.
Hello, good morning. I'm so honored and excited to be here. Words can't describe. I was a Yuba County employee years ago, so it's a little bit surreal to be on this end of the, of the mic, if you will. So the Blue Zones Project Worksite Approval, it's an initiative, but it's not just about checking boxes. It was making a strategic investment in the health, happiness, and performance of Yuba County employees. With departments scattered across multiple locations, the challenge posed, how will we do this? And this is where I want to thank, from the bottom of my heart, Sal and Karen for their efforts. Sal Martinez and Karen Fassler, they were truly a dream to collaborate with. They didn't just understand the Blue Zones philosophies of natural movement, environmental design, and social connection. They owned the process. Sal Martinez in particular emerged as a true wellness champion after helping, after him observing my work done in the Government Center. He voluntarily spearheaded efforts for other major departments such as the Sheriff's Department, probation, child supportive services, and the District Attorney's Office, all before the fiscal year ended this year. Both Karen and Sal's leadership and initiative were essential to scaling these efforts across the entire county. With dedicated leaders like Sal and Karen, a supportive infrastructure, and a growing culture of health, Yuba County is now positioned to thrive, not only as a workplace, but as a model for community well-being. As a former Yuba County employee, I came into this process with a unique perspective. I already had a feel for the workplace culture, but I was truly surprised and proud to see how far, how far things have come since I left in 2022. And some of these meaningful changes include bike pedals available for checkout across departments, discounted gym memberships for all Yuba County employees at Training Zone, the launch of the Yuba County Wellness Committee, driving internal efforts forward, and clearly marked walking arrows around Health and Human Services to promote daily movement, and the formation of walking MOIs in various departments to support connection and consistency. And this is just to name, this is just the surface level of what I'm naming here. I'm especially inspired to see the transition from classic cubicle setups to more open, flexible workspaces with sit sand dust, which can be seen in most departments. And what was already existing, which you are already well aware of, is the charity work that's done in the county, the many volunteer opportunities for Yuba County employees, many community forward-facing events as well, and the opportunity to engage in cross-departmental collaboration that breaks down silos and strengthens connections. collaboration that breaks down silos and strengthens connections. And these initiatives, these best practices, they're working. Since adopting Blue Zones Project best practices, employees report feeling healthier, less stressed, and more supported. Wellness participation is on the rise from short walking breaks to full wellness challenges, and leaders are showing up visibly and actively to support a culture of wellbeing from the top down. So achieving Blue Zones Project worksite approval is more than just a milestone, it's a clear signal of cultural transformation. It tells, it tells the employees you matter. Your health, your environment, your sense of purpose are not afterthoughts, they're priorities. Looking ahead, Yuba County is committed to building on this momentum. With Blue Zones Project as both a framework and a mindset, the county is shaping a workplace where the healthy choice is the easy choice for the benefit of its employees and the community that they serve. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Thank you again, through the chair anyway, sorry. Appreciate what you're doing with the probation and the Sheriff's Department. My job might seem pretty easy as a teacher, as a board member, but those guys have a lot of stress, and those gals have a lot of stress to deal with, and so healthy lifestyles will, will help them effectively, I'm sure. So, thank you.
Just congratulations and to the county, and so thank you to everyone involved and to Blue Zones too for your work on this. I think it's great.
Really, department initiatives, and really the work being done by Christina and Sal and all of the partners at the departments that are already doing so much. So we're just confirming that, really.
Awesome.
Congratulations to our departments.
Yes, that's right. Thank you. Okay, next we're going to move on to public communications. Any person may speak about any subject of concern provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. Please note that no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. Do we have any public communication?
Through the chair, we have one request to speak card and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay.
So first one, Tony Farley.
Morning, Tony.
Morning. Good morning, Chair Greg Bradford, Sacramento. Well, thank you. Thank you, Yes Yuba. That's good, the work, the work development, that's good, I love it. Thank you, Kevin, County Administrator. Thank you, Janet Bender, County Council slash, slash, George graduate. Thank you, Bradford, this Sacramento group, plus Captain Cat, like that. Thank you, John Misk. Thank you. Thank you, Seth Flores, I hear, thank you, House. Thank you, Andy Vasquez, with Trump, Trump tie, the reserve deputy and Vietnam veteran. He's the best guy there, Andy Vasquez. And thank you, Rachel Pio. Thank you, Dr. Lou. Thank you, Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Will Anderson. Thank you, Sergeant over there. Thank you, Public Works Director. Thank you, the probation chief. I saw one with the Bayou Trans Three guy, between chief. Thank you, HR Director. Thank you, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it. Thank you, Izzy, the Izzy's. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Tony. Yeah, I know, I noticed that. I'm like, if we get to six, then. So next up is ordinances and public hearings. If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group. We have one item on the ordinances and public hearings, and it's from the Sheriff Coroner. Ordinance, hold public hearing, waive first reading, and introduce ordinance reaffirming Chapter 2.155, adopting a military equipment use policy to Title II of the Yuba County Ordinance Code and receive military equipment report for 2024.
Good morning to the board. My name is Braden Mallory, and I'm a sergeant with Yuba County Sheriff's Office, assigned to operations. I'm here today to present the annual military equipment use report as required by AB 481. In addition to that, to reaffirm both the county ordinance and Sheriff's Office military equipment policy, Policy 706, copies of which have been provided to you. This report has been posted publicly on the Sheriff's Department's website, and a public meeting was held in accordance with the law. At this time, we have not received any public comments or questions regarding the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Any board comment or question on this item? Okay, seeing none, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay, we have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor House?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur is absent. Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is correspondence. It is as listed, and then we will move on to board and staff member reports, and we'll start with Supervisor Vasquez.
There's, one of the committees that I attend involves a lot of school people, and we have had the first school board presentation last year. I'd like us to see if we can schedule a school board status report as to how we stand as far as English and math, because that's, that's been a serious problem in all of our schools, and we used to be number one in the nation. I think we're now 40th. Also, I'd like, we had some questions about illegal fireworks, and they were trying to find out whether we enforced an ordinance, and the ordinance apparently was from Yuba City, that got us confused, but do we, do we enforce that at all? I'd like to find out about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor House?
Yeah, last week I had a opportunity to go out and tour a job site that's kind of unique out in my district, out off of Garden and Cedar Lane area. It's a 3D-printed community, the first of its kind in the state. There's lots of 3D-printed houses here and there, all over the state, especially up in the Redding area, but there's never been a community of them before. So they're going to build five low-cost houses compared to current market rates. I guess they were saying the estimate was between 300,000 and 400,000 a house instead of 500 and 600, which is typical. But it's new developing technology. They're partnering with the local unions to try to engage a new, new style of workforce, some additional training and certifications for those workers. So anything we can do to support growth and innovation in our county, I think we should continue to, to push forward with it, and I just think if anybody has an opportunity to go out and tour that, or if there's any teachers that want to reach out to me, I can coordinate with them to maybe go out and see that new construction technology. And then lastly, we have the Peach Festivals coming up. It's Friday the 18th and Saturday the 19th in downtown Marysville. We're going to have a Board of Supervisors booth there from 4:00 to 10:00 on Friday and from 10:00 to 10:00 on Saturday, so stop by and see us, or volunteer to work with us and share some of those hours, it'd be great. It's been a mellow year to start with, so hopefully the weather will hold out and won't be horrible, but if not, come out still and see us after dark. See ya.
And Supervisor Messick?
Well, it looks like it's going to be very hot again, predicted to be, so maybe we could sit there and let people throw water balloons at us, Rennick, take some frustration out.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I'm looking forward, yeah, I'm looking forward to the Peach Festival and talking to constituents. I don't have much to report. I went to Brownsville for the 4th of July and went to the Brownsville Farmers Market and walked down to the fire department where they lit off all the safe and sane fireworks. It was a really good show, and local young man, Virgil Harvey, played the National Anthem with his electric guitar, so it's a really neat event. That's it, I'll pass the rest.
Has he, anything today?
Through the chair, we have nothing.
Okay, council?
Anything to report?
Kevin? Nothing, okay. Well, I just have a few quick items. Fourth of July was great in the 4th District as usual. In Plumas Lake, there was a kids' parade in the morning that I participated in with my dog, so we'll count him as my, as my kid, I guess. I used to participate when my kids were really little, but can't do that anymore, so now I have a surrogate. And then went over to Wheatland for their annual community barbecue and bingo event, so fortunately I did not win any bingo, but, but I did have a good time. I also want to give a shout out to the Public Works crew. There's been a Slurry Seal project going on in Plumas Lake, and Public Works has been just really working hard on that, particularly Wes Not, and I just appreciate all his efforts and wanted to give him and everyone else involved in that project a shout out. And then Supervisor House and I will be at the National Association of Counties meeting representing Yuba County. We leave on Thursday, so just a heads up on that. And with that, we will recess until, I guess, 9:50 for closed session as listed on the agenda, and then after that, we will recess until a 1:30 PM cost accounting hearing that's listed on the agenda. So, thank you.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.